Good evening and welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting of Wednesday, January 22. At this time, I'd like to call upon everyone to stand so we can pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd ask that you all remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our soldiers, past and present. I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded by Dartmouth Community Media and also that our next regular scheduled meeting of the Board of Appeals will be Wednesday, February 5th, 2024, at 6 o'clock PM here at 400 Slocum Road. Moving on to the public hearings portion of tonight's meeting. The first case, and these are two matters that have been continued. The first case is variance case ZAV 26-16. The petitioner is Elizabeth Cahill. The owner is William S. Hughes. The subject property is 2 Featherbed Lane, Map 95, Lot 6. It's located within the single residence B district. The matter has been advertised. We've already waived the reading of the abutters list. In this case, the petitioner is seeking a variance for setback relief to construct a new garage with two bedrooms and bathroom on the second floor, which will be located 24.3 feet from the property line, where 60 feet is required. They're seeking relief on the Article 8, Section 375-8.4 D2A development standards. And the next matter, which we also opened, it's a companion case. It's a special permit, ZSP 24-20. It's the same petitioner, same owner, same parcel. But here, the petitioner is seeking a special permit to bring water into a proposed accessory structure, a garage with two bedrooms and bathroom, seeking relief on the Article 8, 375-8.3 B12 special permit. Also to expand the main house footprint, increasing the nonconformity of the structure by extending into the front yard setback from 40.6 to 28.1 feet. They're seeking relief on the Article 6, Section 375-6.2B2, nonconforming structures. So at this time, I see that the petitioner's representative is here. I believe it's Ms. Cahill. I'm going to call upon Ms. Cahill to come forward. She's the representative from, oh, I think we have someone different.
Should I say?
No, that's all right. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Peter Bullard with an office in New Bedford. I've known Liz and her family for months. And obviously, I was not here during the first hearing. And so she asked me last week to kind of review some things. And so I am here just to help her walk through the process with you all and the concerns that you raised, I guess, at the first meeting. And as I understand it, and as I said, since I wasn't here, maybe I have misunderstood the problem. But in a nutshell, as I understand it, the special permit, the board had concerns that the garage design was going to be a separate residence. And so Liz called me up and said, explained what the concerns were. And she showed me the plans and stuff. As I understand the plans, they're, the design doesn't include a kitchen and they're very, very limited plumbing features, very, very small bathroom. And, I mean, I've done the special permits before, as you know, because I've been in front of you many times. But typically, if a special permit is granted, there's the, I wouldn't call it a restriction, but the quid pro quo is there can be inspections at any time. The special permit can be revoked if it ever is converted into a separate residence. And the petitioners here, like many kind of summer communities, they really have designed this to take, they want someplace to put the overflow guests during the summertime. So they have absolutely no intention of ever, ever renting it out as a separate residence. And they would be happy if the zoning board needed to specify that in the decision. So I'm just here to help work you through the process, if in fact that was the issue that was troubling you.
If I may, Mr. Bullard, the problem that we have, and the thing is, this has been a longstanding position that this board has taken in these circumstances. And obviously, what triggers this is the fact that water's being brought to service this particular structure, this proposed structure. And the moment that happens, it triggers the requirement for a special permit.
Right.
And the special permit bylaw, in order for us to grant the special permit, it specifically says that the Board of Appeals must determine that the accessory building or structure will not be used as an additional residential unit on the property. The Board of Appeals shall determine through a review of submitted plans that the nature of the proposed plumbing, wiring, or other utilities is not proposed in such a manner so that the necessary building or structure could be used or converted into an additional residential unit.
Right.
We have always seen as a red flag, the moment we see anything about a bedroom on any plan or anything that looks like it could be a closet with another room, even if it's not designated as a bedroom, we will interpret that as being a bedroom. And we will not accept those plans as submitted and we won't grant the special permit. We've not done it since I've been on this board. And I think it's been about closely, it's a closely approaching 10 years now?
Eleven.
Eleven. So I'm only one person, but obviously, I don't know how my fellow members feel. But one of the things that I know that I have voiced on numerous occasions is the fact that we always instill in all the petitioners, and we like it when the petitioner shows up so that they know that there's this ongoing restriction. So we may, I verbally confirm with them that they're aware of it, that there could be an inspection, and that it can never be utilized as a residence.
Right.
So when we see, as a board historically, when we see bedrooms, we think of living quarters. Living quarters is going to be, can be utilized as a residence. It doesn't have to be permanent. It doesn't even have to be for a week. But if it can be used as a residence, if we see a plan that gives any indications that it can be used as a residence, we haven't granted a special permit.
So, so the fact that there is no kitchen and the fact that there is very, very limited plumbing for one very modest bathroom doesn't impact where you all, where you are coming from?
No. We've actually had situations in which people have a bathroom and a small kitchenette. As long as there was no indicators to us that there's going to be sleeping quarters, we've granted that. Because there are situations where people have a pool house, they'll have a barbecue, they want a little kitchenette so they can have some running water, a sink or something, and they want a bathroom, or maybe even a shower, so people can wash after coming out of a salted pool or whatever it may be, saltwater pool. And we've granted that, as long as there was no other indication that it could be utilized as a residence. But when we see sleeping quarters, for us, it's been a red flag. And I'm only speaking for myself. Gentlemen, if you have anything you want to bring up, if there's something else, if I misspoke, I'm willing to hear.
I agree with what Mr. Maderas just said. Soon as you have the magic words bedroom in your request, you're putting in another residential unit, which is in violation of the bylaw.
So can I, can I ask you if, 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 if we agree that it wouldn't, it is residential in that, in that, yes, there's a bedroom, so we want the grandkids to be able to sleep there. But it's not a separate residential unit because it wouldn't...
Of course it is.
Well, if I, if I can finish.
Go ahead.
There would, there would never be a, it would never be rented out as a separate residential unit. It's a zone, single family.
Let me just ask you a question.
Yeah.
Your, your position that as long as it's not rented, it's not a residential unit?
That's, it would not be a separate, the zoning there, as you know, is single-family B, so it can only have one residence, okay? And so they cannot, under that, ever rent out a second unit. And I think as I...
But that's not the standard that the bylaw places upon us as a board.
Excuse me, may I?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah. Also, in the bylaws, Attorney Bullard, we do have a provision for in-laws or exactly for what you're talking about, for when you have people over or you have, you know, so we do buy, buy, buy rights. You can add something to the house that is connected, and I don't believe, I'm not sure if it's 800 square feet.
I think it's 800.
You can add another unit, 800 square feet attached, and this is what we've...
Right.
...asked last time, you know? And I've been on this board probably the longest. And I tell you, 15 years ago, we would look at the plans, we even look at the, at the insulation to make, you know, and there were some questions whether this, because people will come in and say, this is a cottage, we're going to be using it in the summertime, you know, it's not going to be all year long, you know, we need some, we need a bathroom, and we, and somehow, the bylaw is, it even says, the wiring, not, not even, we're not talking about just a kitchenette or a cooking stove or whatever, you know? Even, they say wiring, and I'm not sure with the wiring, what they mean exactly, but heating...
I think what they mean is if you start putting receptacles in a room every 16...
I understand that. And, you know, it was always a flag. The option is, if you want to revise the plans, take the bedrooms out. Whether you have somebody there for a week in the summer, they want to sleep there, we're not the enforcement officer, but it cannot approve something that says a bedroom on the plan. That's the issue here. So, you know, and we've done that in the past, where clearly, we've seen plans that had a flag, that it could, had a closet, four walls, and it could be, you know, easily converted into a bedroom, and we alerted the applicant to either take the closet out or open a door, make it more open, you know, so. But again, the labeling the two bedrooms is, is a problem for us.
So is it fair to say that your position is that if Ms. Cahill redesigned the plans?
Oh, we gave it that choice last, you know, I mean, you can either, either redesign the building itself or the separate structure, not the, and not to provide sleeping...
But I don't know if that's the motivation. I think the motivation is that the owner of the property wants to be able to utilize this as a residential unit, even though it's not going to be separate with other people occupying it, but if family members want to stay there. And we cannot, we're not going to grant that authority because the bylaw doesn't allow us to do it.
So, message received.
Because the whole purpose of this is, we don't want to see two residences on the same lot. That's why this bylaw was put into place. Because once you start running water into an additional structure, then you run the risk that they're going to have two houses on one lot.
Yeah.
Now, we do have an entirely, we have a whole new rule, a mandate, coming down from the governor about ADUs.
Yeah.
And that's something that's beyond our control. And we're in a very precarious position because some of that's going to impact some of this, and I'm not sure exactly how it's all going to play out. But that's going to start taking effect on February 2nd. And ADUs can come in at 900 square feet. And I know people are going to start coming here, and they're going to start asking for ADUs, they're going to ask for variances for something greater than 900 feet.
Yeah.
And I don't know how the board's going to handle it.
Yeah.
We've got, we're at a crucible here, I think, with some of these issues with accessory structures and ADUs and how this town is going to move forward with them.
Yeah. Okay, so...
And again, I'm only speaking for myself. We're a three-member board. I only speak for me.
Yeah.
But I certainly, and obviously, you need all of us, I would not approve any plan that came before us in this context that had bedrooms delineated on it. Because we've sent people back at least a half a dozen, maybe a dozen times. We've sent people back to say, no, it cannot be used as a bedroom. And then we reinforce verbally with them, with a colloquy with me and them, that they understand that it's not to be used as a residential unit. Now, what they do after, that's between them and the zoning enforcement officer.
So, as I said, message received. I'm older than dirt, and so I go way, way back. But my memory is that in the past, I've had the good fortune to represent some clients in summer communities. And in the past, they were able to kind of stick the grandkids in a separate building. But that, maybe, maybe that's beyond the 10 or 11 years that you've been doing this. But what, what I would recommend to my client is that we continue this so that she can revisit her drawings. And then, when the drawings are revised, I guess she would review them with the building inspector to see if that is, type of relief is still necessary. I think it is. Even if she, if she revises the drawings so that there are no bedrooms, there are no closets, you know, all that type of stuff, I think she still has to come here...
For setback requirement, a variance, she needs a variance.
The variance, and also bringing water to an accessory building.
Yes, that.
Yeah.
But there's another special permit also for the expansion of the pre-existing nonconforming structure, which is the main home. And if you want to, if they're, if they're looking to have that move along, because that's a project that's separate from, from, from the garage, we can go forward on that. We're prepared to move forward on that if they need the special permit for the expansion of the main home.
Is that something that...
Sure, I'm happy to...
Yeah, so that would be great. So I will defer to...
Before we do that, so you have no intention of adding to the existing house?
Yeah, they do.
Well, no, no, not, not the addition.
The bedrooms.
Yeah. Because that would be another, then we'll have to come back for another special permit.
Of course they do. Well, no, they're going to continue that to come back. That one, they're going to continue.
If she asks, she's, now you're adding small addition, I think, on the side and maybe to the front, right? And this is what we're talking about, that special.
That special permit.
If she decides to, somehow, I'm not sure, if she's convinced that she can add 800 square feet to the house...
Oh, I see what you mean. You don't want to take away from that option.
She's coming back, she would come back for a special permit, unless she can meet all the setbacks, I don't know.
I see what you mean. So basically, you just either...
It might make more sense, because I don't think that she knows right now what her redesign's going to be.
Yes.
Yeah.
And so it might be best for her to kind of grapple with that and then figure out what kind of...
I think so. That's what we discussed at the last meeting too, so.
Yeah.
Right. And if she can put the, if they can put the bedrooms attached to the house, no issue.
Yeah.
But they're limited to 800 square feet if they do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think the size, what is the size of the proposed garage anyway?
It is...
You've got to step up here because it's...
Yeah, it's recorded. You just state your name for the record.
My name's Elizabeth Cahill, and thank you all for seeing us again. I believe it is, and I have, so the, the habitable spaces only? Only the conditioned spaces of the garage or the entire building, are you interested?
First floor, second floor, if you don't mind.
Including the unconditioned garage space or?
Yes.
Okay. So that would be, one moment, please. Sorry, I need a calculator, one moment.
No problem.
If you have the dimensions, just, if you have the outside dimensions of the building, it's fine.
Because it's irregular, is that why?
It's irregular. Yes, it's irregular.
I have a three-bedroom house, and I want to add two more bedrooms to it. You're saying I'm limited to 800 square feet?
No, I'm not.
No.
No, it's for an accessory unit.
No, no, I understand that, fine.
No, you can...
They're tired of my just putting bedrooms on, aren't they?
No. They're trying to create a new garage with, with two bedrooms.
Kitchen and bathroom.
No, just a bathroom and two bedrooms upstairs. And historically, you know, we don't have to rehash what we've already said, but...
Right.
That's always been something we've been concerned with.
So the overall building size that we're talking about in square footage is about 1,800, including all of the garage space, and that's, that's unconditioned.
And the conditioned space is how much, how many square feet?
That would be roughly 1,000.
1,000, okay.
So...
Now, how familiar are you with the new ADU from the state?
So I dug deep into that, actually, after, after we were here before and we chatted. And the, as, as I'm reading all of those regulations, it seems that the ADU law that's coming up will not apply to this because the definition of, of accessory dwelling unit includes a kitchen. So this, this doesn't qualify for that anyway. It's, it's not, it's a separate, separate kind of building.
You can go that route, right. Put a small stove in them.
Small kitchen.
Want to. I mean, so it's not, it's not going to be an ADU.
But if, to get the 900 square feet, you don't want to do that, that's fine. I mean, I, we're trying to help.
I appreciate that.
But the point I'm trying to get at is, for the calculation on the DADU, is it just based on conditioned space or is it based on total gross square footage?
That is still a mystery to me. It is, I didn't see any sort of clear language on that.
They're still clarifying.
Yeah.
I think that's what it says.
I think they made some changes since when they first released this back in September or October, when it first came out. There's already some changes to this. But, I don't know. I don't, I don't know the answer. I was hoping that someone else had it, but that's understandable. And you're, you're probably answering truthfully, that you don't know because it's sort of unclear.
Unclear, I didn't see any clear language regarding that.
But I just see situations where you would have a garage on the full, entire first level and only the habitable space on the desirable second level. I would like to think they're only going to count, they're only going to count the habitable space above.
That's what I would hope, but I don't actually know.
I think so. This is more specifically, I was reading the city of Boston and like all the metropolitan areas, you know, because they allow it for smaller, even on smaller lots, and specific set garages and accessory structures, you know, so. You might be able, by all means, you know, find under that with tweaking, but...
Have you spoken to our building inspector and see what his understanding was, his interpretation of the ADU, ADU mandate is?
Yes, I've spoken with him about that, among a lot of other, you know, related issues. And he doesn't seem to, his, his opinion, as I'm hearing it, is aligned with my own.
Which is?
Which is that this doesn't, isn't relevant because we're not trying to put a kitchen in. So it's just, it's not related to the particular building.
So you're, you're trying to say that by definition, it has to have, in order for you to fall under the ADU, it has to have a kitchen?
Yeah, and it's, it's written very clearly in that language.
What's the definition of a kitchen?
Cooking facility.
Okay, so you can have an electric stove, and that's a cooking facility, right? They sell plug-in electric stove for, you know, with the...
Yes.
No, no, I'm not being, you know, I mean, it's not, because we've had, we've had other plans come in front of us when people are using the, the accessory structure as a working office or a gym, and they had a shower, and also, I think they might have had some small... But it was designed in a way, it was all open space. It wasn't going to be used as a bedroom or converted into a bedroom. And this is how we made the determination. And again, we've been doing this for the past 15 years, and we've been so consistent. So it's really kind of trying to, not to set a precedent at this, at this time. Especially, we have the accessory dwelling units coming soon, and we don't know. We need to figure out how it's going to play within the zoning bylaws too.
So may I ask a question? After the last hearing, I, you know, combed through the bylaws like ad nauseam. Like I was trying to, to understand the perspective of this board because our intention is to, you know, do whatever is needed to, to make this possible. I did not see a clear definition of a residence or a residential unit in the zoning bylaws. Is that something that I just somehow kept missing?
We have it, well, it's under the single, the definition of a single family. That's what we have, that's what, that we go off of.
Okay.
Place of living that, that may be...
Is it 10, 810? I think it's 810, 8.10.
375, eight?
You got to go the other way.
Single building or portion thereof that provides living quarters for one family, the living quarters may be or may not include cooking, sleeping, or sanitary facilities. So even, may or may not.
You don't even have to have cooking facility in order for it to still be a single-family dwelling.
And which section was that? I just wanted to look at it.
375, 37510 is the general residence. So if you go to that, it's just...
But that was, that was eight, though, that was eight.
Eight, 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 eight. Yeah, eight, eight is the B, yeah, yeah.
Two?
It's the same definition in every single section, I believe, of the board.
Yeah.
So really, the kitchen or no kitchen, I don't think it makes a difference, you know? That's what we're saying, like, otherwise...
But the problem is, I understand the conflict. The conflict between the zoning bylaw and now the ADU that's coming down from the governor, just, it puts a lot of people in a very precarious position and try to, try to navigate through this.
Well, and I think, you know, from the perspective of the applicant, it's very confusing also. It's just not clear.
And that's kind of complicated things for us because we allow the in-laws with the 800 square feet. So people might think, oh, I can put 800 square feet attached to my house and then put another single 900 square feet detached. So it's something we need to figure out, otherwise, you know...
It's 375-8.2. It's under allowed uses, and it's in the single residence B district. That's what you had read. All right, so at this point, I think it'd be most prudent that we continue this. When's our next meeting?
February 5th.
Next month, I am not here.
Okay, well, we have, Walter was here today.
Walter's here.
Yeah.
Mullen, he has to do the mullen.
He has to do the mullen. You'll have to watch the first one. Are you going to be available on February 5th, Walter?
Is she ready?
I'm going to do a funeral February 5th.
You're going to do a funeral?
I'm here.
Would you be ready by February 5th?
Unsure.
So I think it's better because February 2nd, I think this ADU might be into effect, in effect too. So maybe you should wait and then give you some time, a couple of weeks to figure out. Because we're trying to have a quorum here for you two.
Not till March.
For four weeks?
Okay, then the president, four weeks now.
When is President's Day? Oh, in March, sorry, sorry, sorry. Do we have anything on for the 19th at this point?
Yes, two.
Two? I don't know if I'm going to be around. It's February vacation week.
President's Day is 17th.
Yeah, I noticed that.
That week, I think he takes the school vacation.
I'm back on the 24th of February.
Well, look, we can put it on for the 19th, we'll see what happens. If we have a quorum, we have a quorum. If we don't, we'll have to put it off for the following month.
Do we want to, do we want to move from the 19th to the 26th?
Can we do that?
Sure.
There's enough time to do that?
Sure.
All right, put it on for the 26th.
26th, you're...
That'd be best.
Are you going to have a meeting on the 26th?
Instead.
I'll be here.
So we'll move it to the 26th.
Sure. Could I ask a couple more questions to make sure that I'm getting on to the right path here? So one of the other things that we discussed last time as an alternate path forward was to attach the building, the proposed new building to the existing building. So we did take a kind of a very, like, initial rough look at that as well. And it posed some, some pretty big challenges. And it basically, it was going to amount to like an extraordinary scope creep to the degree that it was, it just wouldn't be possible because of the potential locations for the new proposed garage wing. The logical place to connect it is where the primary bedroom is located. You can't really connect it through a bedroom. So now we're moving the bedroom and the associated bathroom and closets. And now we're redesigning the entire house. So this, like, this is the challenge with the, that kind of attached scheme. So the question is, would a more delicate type of attachment be considered? Like a, like a open breezeway type of thing?
Is it going to look like two mass, masses with, with the corridor?
I mean, it might, yeah. Would that be, no?
That's what we're trying not to.
Okay.
And there was cases where we turned them down, so.
Okay.
So there was a precedent for that. Because, I mean, the idea, clearly, it says it has to be designed to integrate with the existing dwelling to look like as one unit. Because otherwise, you'll have them all over the place, you know? And it's not, yeah, I know, I know, it's not easy, you know, but...
I didn't consider the fact that you could have the bedrooms on one side, and that's not an actual, you know...
Yeah, I mean, the connection point is, it's really, this, this is going to amount to another million dollars in construction costs.
Let me ask you, what about the ADU? Let me ask you, what about the ADU? That's going to come about, that's next month anyway, an ADU, and you're at 900 square, you can't make it 900 square feet?
Oh, I'm sure you can.
We might be able to pinch it down. I mean, I still come back to, and maybe Peter can speak to this as well, the, I'm failing to see the relevance of it just because, you know, we have no desire to put a kitchen in, so I'm.
There might be your pass to get the bedrooms, that's all we're saying.
You mean to add a kitchen?
Yeah.
But like, we don't even have room for that and we definitely won't have room.
You don't have to put a full, put a kitchenette or small, you know, recessed.
But the thing is, here's what I don't understand. You're saying that by, and again, I don't know a lot about the ADUs, but by definition, the ADU has to have a kitchen?
It says, uses the word and.
Because a single family home, under our definition of our bylaw, doesn't require a kitchen. A kitchen, cooking, a cooking area is, it may or may not have it. And yet, under the ADU, it's going to require it.
I'm not sure on that. I mean, I'm not sure. I've read it, but.
I would speak, I would speak to our building inspector about that and see if that's his interpretation of it.
I mean, you can't find 20 square feet somewhere with the kitchenette.
I mean, not, and not in getting it down to the right size, I don't think.
Okay, I think you can do it, but again, it's, that's the pass. And we don't want to start with, even with the ADU, we have to be careful because 900 is 900. I think we start doing the 12 and 13 and the 14. I'm not sure how I see about that, so.
This is going to be interesting where this goes, not just this case, just I'm talking in general. We're really at a crucible here. It's going to be, it's going to be interesting to see. Anyway, all right, you have any other questions?
No, I think I'm good for now.
All right.
Thank you.
And if you do, you can ask them through, if it comes about, ask through, through Michelle.
Michelle, yeah.
She'll forward it and we'll try and respond to it as best we can, okay?
Thank you.
We do want to work with people. All right, so I'll entertain a motion, gentlemen, if someone's willing to make a motion to continue this to February 26th, on the condition that if there's any extension paperwork that needs to be signed, you'll have to sign it. You understand that? Otherwise, the continuance is not granted. We get that, Mr. Bullitt?
Absolutely.
Will that be you?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, gentlemen, entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we continue variance ZAV 26-16 and special permit ZSP 24-20.
Hold on one second, I'm sorry. I'm going to ask you to, you're going to have to restate that. We still have people in the audience that I didn't see here the last time. This is a public hearing, I'm sorry. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either in favor or in opposition to this petition? This is the two featherbed lane request for a variance or for a special permit. No, this, I thought there might be, but just to make, just to be, okay.
I make a motion that we continue variance ZAV 26-16 and special permit ZSP 24-22, February 26th.
Second that motion.
All in favor? All right, the ayes have it. We'll see you.
Was there also the second issue that we were going to discuss?
Yeah, we continued both of them.
Oh, both of them?
Yeah, we continued both, because just so that you leave all options open.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good luck.
Yes. All right, gentlemen, moving on. So I'm going to have to recuse myself to the next public hearing on special permit ZSP 24-22. So at this time, I'm going to take, we're going to take a five-minute recess.
Dartmouth had these current zoning bylaws. So, as you all know, Dartmouth's an extremely expensive town to live in. And the owner of this parcel wants for his parents to be able to move to Dartmouth to be closer to him as they age and get older. But this current structure is inadequate for, I guess, his elder parents to be able to reside within. It is very tight within this existing building. And actually, when you go up into the second floor, majority of the second floor is within the roof slope. And some of these bedrooms, to current building code standards, wouldn't even pass as habitable space. The goal of this project is to be able to put a bathroom on the first floor, so that way his elderly parents don't have to be going up and down, up and downstairs, to be going to the bathroom. And it is also to create a larger bedroom for them to be able to reside within. It's safer for them to be able to go around the bed. And just for accessibility in the bedroom as a whole. We're not changing the bedroom count. He's just looking to add an extra bathroom and make the space more functional throughout. Now, this structure is a little bit different than what we've seen in the typical ADU situation in general. This building has its own address, which is not typical with an accessory dwelling unit. It also has its own utilities, gas, electric, and water, and sewer, all going to the structure. It's truly been treated as its own house within the same parcel over all of these years. So it's kind of hard to compare it to an ADU, but also you can't call it a single family because it's on the same lot. But that being said, in comparison, on Bridge Street, there's an existing two-family, which also has a four-family behind it, all in one parcel, which is a smaller piece of land than this. All functioning perfectly fine in its capacity. So he's just looking to expand the structure a little bit and, you know, allow for his family to be able to use this space in a safe manner.
Okay. Any of the board members have any questions for the applicant?
Who's there now?
He currently has a tenant who's resided there for a long time. But with this renovation, to my knowledge, the tenant's gonna be moving out, and then his parents are gonna be moving in. But it's never been a short-term rental. He would never want it to be a short-term rental, especially because he lives on the property himself. It's not the intention.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to recuse myself from this case, please.
Okay, for the record, Dr. Iga accused himself from this hearing, for this case. Attorney Feria?
I just had a couple of que-- the, uh, the plan that I'm looking-- Is the bathroom, there's no, no second floor? There is a second floor in this present unit, is that correct?
I'm sorry, if you might repeating your question.
The present structure, the bathroom is on the second floor?
Yes, yes.
And I don't see, on your, on your plan, it doesn't show the existing bathroom.
It probably would have been included in the portal. If not, I could always provide it, but it's, it's a full bathroom on the second floor. It's really not changing much in footprint, just enlarging slightly to make it safer.
You know what, I was, I was looking at the plan. I have to tell you that about 100 years ago, I rented this cottage when I was in law school.
There you go. So you should know the bathroom.
Great times there, that was before I met Michael Maderis, so. But I'm very familiar with the building, and I think it's a pretty good plan to, you know, add on to that so that the parents can utilize that building. I don't have any further questions.
His plan is to have his parents come and live there? And he's got bedrooms and bathrooms on the second floor? Gonna make them going up and down the stairs?
Well, you can see the first floor is pretty expanded itself. So if his parents get to the position that they are not able to be going up and downstairs anymore, the idea is that they'd be able to move down onto the first floor.
Into the sitting area or the living room?
Yeah, it would, the space would primarily become just for themselves if it got to that point.
So, the, the plan, as I'm looking at it right now, is gonna have two bathrooms?
Correct.
One on the first floor, one on the second floor?
Yes, sir.
Any more questions?
Is this property owned by the same owner of the big house?
The sixty, two sixty-three, right? Two sixty-three?
Yeah, two sixty-three, two sixty-one, I think. Or two sixty-seven.
You're good?
Yep. I don't have any questions.
Well, this is a public hearing, and is there anyone in, in the audience who would like to voice their opinion, either in support or in opposition? Please come to the podium at this time. Okay, see none. I have a couple of questions regarding the, uh, the existing structure itself. So, on the first floor, you don't have a bathroom currently on the first floor?
No.
You don't have a bathroom. You have an existing living room that you're keeping, and then proposed sitting area. When you go to the second floor, I see a limit of full height, kind of, in the middle or a little bit over, because that's kind of like a reverse dormer, I believe.
Yes.
Structure. So the, the, the full height at the dash line, is that eight feet?
Uh, it's like seven foot six.
Seven six?
Yeah, it's that.
So you'll, you have a corridor probably that gives you six-five or minimum at one side?
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
So you can get across. And you have two bedrooms upstairs currently and a bathroom?
Yes.
And there's no bathroom on the first floor?
Correct.
I'm not sure how, I mean, this is an existing structure. We know that. It's, it has a thousand square feet. You would be, you wouldn't be allowed to have a second unit there anyways, but it's a grandfather, you know, it's existing, non-conforming, and it's twenty-five percent, already twenty-five percent over what you're allowed if, if this was allowed, if it was allowed to be. Going to sixteen hundred square feet, is that what? Kind of, I don't know how you feel about this. I mean, um,
I don't really have any objection to it. I, I think it, uh, it's a pre-existing, non-conforming piece of property. And all we have to do is establish or satisfy ourselves that it's, uh, consistent with the neighborhood.
We designed it in a way that was gonna be appealing and try to match the aesthetic of the existing home, other houses in the neighborhood. We didn't want it to stand out like a sore thumb by any means. So that's, you know, that, that was the thought going into the design.
So because it's an existing, it, it's a pre-existing, non-conforming, is that why you're?
That's what the building inspector said.
No, no, I know, it is, but I'm saying this is why you're--
Right, that's why I don't have a problem with it.
It's almost twice the size of what would be allowed. That's, that's what I'm saying. And we need to grant the special permit, so.
Because it's being added on to another building, is what you're saying?
No, because it's an existing, non-conforming. That's why they're going, because if it wasn't, there would have sort of variance if it was below the eight hundred, or even if it wasn't allowed. So, uh--
This is kind, uh, Mr. Chair, this is kind of a, a unique situation because you got two houses on the same lot.
Right.
But I, as I recall, and as I said, I, I used to rent that house years ago. As I recall, the backyard is fairly, a, a long backyard and a--
It is, I mean, I'm looking at the site--
Narrow and long, but the, uh, and I think the neighbor next door just went through a major renovation.
Yep. And two, you know, we're not increasing bedroom counts. The occupancy itself of this structure is not gonna change. The building's never been a problem. I mean, Wal, Walter went through college living there, and, you know, God knows what was going on. Never mind now, it's an older couple, so.
Yeah, I, I don't, the, the proposed addition is fourteen, six, that's what it says here. So it's fourteen by twenty-two, is that the, that proposed addition?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure. I don't have a decision on this either, so I'm not sure how. I think we, we need to continue this one. I would like to, I didn't have a chance to go by. I know the area, I mean, I've, I've been there a thousand times, but I, I'd like to look at the property itself, look at the backyard, and, and, and check it out. I didn't have a chance to do it today. I, uh, I found out late afternoon that I have to cover this case. And I think I, I would prefer to, and I have to give it a little more thought, you know, just so how we're heading with these things. Because what concerns me is we have the ADU. I know this is not an ADU, uh, unit, but once we have the ADU, I think the limit is nine hundred square feet. So we have to be careful. If somebody's coming and saying, well, you approved the sixteen hundred square feet. Why can't I get more than nine hundred square feet? You know, so trying to--
No, but you're, you're talking about putting up a brand-new building versus adding to a pre-existing.
Right, but I mean, it's still another accessory dwelling unit in the back of a house. They might have the same situation where they, they have an oversized backyard that says, you know, this is not really gonna affect anything, it's still two bedrooms, you know, so I've just, this, that's my concern at this time.
I understand, and also, you know, for the, for the owner, it's, it's been kind of difficult ages of the essence because the owner of this parcel's already in his late sixties, seventies, so his parents are definitely up there in age.
No, we understand that. That's, again, we're looking at zoning bylaws. I think this is, we can't place medical or financial burdens. It's, it's not, you know, we're unzoning, but we, we understand, you know, we're not, uh, too far from people, and we try to do the best we can. But again, we're looking at the zoning bylaws, and, you know, be, I'm being very careful, we don't wanna set a precedent for something, you know, so.
Obviously, there's a, there's a deep need for housing in this region. This area alone has a need for thirty-five hundred units, so.
But I mean, I have to look at this, you know, so, because this, again, after a long time, whatever, even they can live fifty years or whatever, after that, this structure could be easily turned into three bedrooms, you know? And I, that's not the case. But I, I have to think about it a little more. You know, I know the area, I know, you know, I mean, this, maybe that's not the, the intention of the, of the owner, but this could be a perfect Airbnb for three bedrooms and near, you know? Again, this may not be the case, but we have to consider all options, you know, so.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I know I've recused myself, and I'm not making any decisions, and I'm not trying to persuade the members of the board one way or another on this. But I just ask you to be mindful of the fact that we've had other people come before us to build an accessory apartment. And anything that's above eight hundred, we've been very reluctant to go over. If we had someone coming before us to build a new accessory apartment, and they were asking for sixteen hundred square feet right from the inception, I don't know where that, where, where our board would come out with something like that. Here, I know they're piecemealing, it's a situation where we've got a pre-existing, non-conforming accessory, accessory structure with a thousand, they're asking for six hundred more. But we have a bylaw, and I'll, I'll never forget the person that came before us down in, on, uh, on Allen Street, where they wanted to build something that was about thirteen, fourteen hundred. And we, we had some issues with that, so just be mindful of, you know, and I think, I think that's something they're struggling with, I, I sense it because of the fact that people are gonna be coming before us. And I'm not saying we shouldn't grant this, that's, that's, you, you guys wanna grant it, that's fine. But you just have to be mindful of where things are gonna go moving forward.
That's my concern. I, I agree with you. I mean, it's not, again, this is maybe a special case because it's an existing, non-conforming, but I, have you looked into the structure itself to, I mean, you can add a couple of dormers in the back and increase the bedrooms and make it really very fitting and near the village, you know?
Again, you know, just like, just like if I, if your kids approached you and tried to get you to move out of your house, you have to, they, they would have to come to you with something lucrative. The way that this house is set up right now, it's not structured in a way that's very feasible to easily open things up and make it fluid. So that's why we tried to keep the addition to a limit, but also in a way that would be enticing for his parents to move and for the overall health and benefit of all that. But I do ask, you know, when you do go and take a look at this, because you're gonna continue it.
Right.
Take a look at thirty-five Bridge Street. It's literally six units, all in one parcel, smaller parcel than this, within a block of, or within, you know, very short distance of-- It's thirty-five Bridge Street. It's a, it's a two-family on Bridge Street, and it has four units behind. It's a beautiful property, functions great, and, you know, one of my tenants actually used, we used to live there, so take a look at that as reference.
Okay. Have you looked into the option of modifying the structure itself? I mean--
Yeah, we have, but again, it's, it's, it's just not very feasible for what they're trying, to be able to put a ba-, a bathroom on the first floor. You know--
Yeah, you lose some space, but do you really need a living room and a sitting area?
That's, that's the intentions based off of what he needs for his parents, from what, from what he explained.
I, I mean, I, I'm, I'm in this line of business, I, I've done, I think you got tremendous opportunities here too, you know, with the reverse dormer in the back, or some kind of dormers to increase the bedrooms, and I think you can make it work. I mean, the state is, is, is put a, a cap on nine hundred square feet for two bedrooms. After, I'm sure they did the, the research and the study that if you can fit, you can have a small family with the two bedrooms of a nine hundred square feet, so.
Right.
If you're already over what, you know, I, again, I--
Stand.
That's another option, because you're coming to the zoning board of appeal, and after zoning of appeal, we need to look, you need to exhaust all your options before you come to us, basically. And then, that's my, my, my thought is maybe there, there is some room here or some options to work with. But again, let me, I--
Look.
Well, I would like to go on this, you know, on the property and take a look at the structure and, and see if I have a better understanding of what's going on, but--
What are you talking about? Continue.
We need to continue, I, I don't think on the twenty-sixth, we don't have, right? Is that the next one we said?
The next one's the fifth.
Yeah, but I won't be, I won't be here. My next meeting will be the twenty-sixth, February.
What's wrong with me?
The fifth is--
Can I ask a question? Does this house have a, a full cellar? I can't remember.
Uh, it does have, it does have a full basement, yeah. It's, this, this structure has the utilities, the water, the gas, the electric. None of that's usually allowed for accessory dwelling units, and it has the address, which makes it a very difficult project to kind of gauge what it gets classified as. It's just, I honestly think it used to, I didn't get to do the title research, but I think it used to be two par, two parcels at one point that were combined over time. But based off how this was built, it could have been two.
Yeah. Okay. So the next is the fifth, February fifth?
No, February twenty-sixth.
No, I thought, no.
Unless you don't mean me. Who's gonna say?
Oh, that's right. Bob's not here, yeah.
Twenty-fifth?
Six.
Twenty-sixth.
Okay.
Do we need any extensions?
Well, I'm sure he'll, he'll sign, yeah. So we need a motion to continue this to twenty-sixth.
Our move that we continue is Z, uh, ZSP dash twenty-four dash twenty-two. Is that an application for a special permit? Yeah, until February twenty-sixth.
So I have that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we'll see you then, thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Michael, you wanna run this fast, last, uh-- Okay, well, take five minutes recess.
Moving on to the administrative portion of tonight's meeting. First is review and approval of administrative appeal, AAPL dash twenty-four dash two, for Three Narragansett Street, dated November twentieth of two thousand and twenty-four. I don't have any comments on this, gentlemen.
I have no comments, Mr. Chair.
I have no comments.
All right, entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the review and approval of, that we approve the administrative appeal minutes, AAPL dash twenty-four dash three, Three Narragansett Street.
Twenty-four dash two.
Oh, I'm sorry, AAPL dash twenty-four dash two.
Yes. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Next is review and approval of administrative minutes of January eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. I don't have any comments, gentlemen.
I have no comments.
I have no comments, Mr. Chair.
I make a motion that we approve the administrative minutes of January eighth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes, the ayes have it. Review and approval of variance ZAV twenty-six dash sixteen for Two Featherbed Lane.
I have no comments, Mr. Chair.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of variance ZAV dash twenty-six dash sixteen, Two Featherbed Lane.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Moving on to review and approval of special permit, ZSP twenty-four dash twenty.
No comment, no additions.
No comments, Mr. Chair.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the special permit, ZSP dash twenty-four dash, I don't think, is it twenty?
Is it twenty-one?
Yeah, it's, well, I guess there is, I don't see a twenty, but there is a twenty-one. Twelve Prospect Street, twenty-one, twenty, twenty-four dash twenty-one.
No, 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 that, we're still doing Two Featherbed, that's the special permit of Two Featherbed.
But I'm sorry, I don't have, I don't have that--
That was all in one? It was the variance in special permit you just approved?
Oh, it was also--
It was to get, all in one? Oh, it didn't say it all in one.
Yeah, I didn't say that, but it's okay. Uh, we, let's entertain that motion and, uh,
All right.
You wanna commence it? Re-initiate it?
Yeah, let's, uh, make a motion that we approve the minutes of variance, ZAV dash twenty-six dash sixteen, and special permit, ZSP dash twenty-four dash twenty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. I believe she did it that way because we, we actually handled them both at the same time, so I'm sure she tried to keep consistency. All right, next is review and approval of special permit, ZSP twenty-four dash twenty, twenty-one, which is for Twelve Prospect Street.
No comments, Mr. Chair.
I have no comments.
I don't have any comments. Gentlemen down there, any comments?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of special permit, ZSP dash twenty-four dash twenty-one for Twelve Prospect Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Now, gentlemen, is there any old business that we need to discuss? Is there any new business that we need to discuss? Obviously, this whole ADU situation is, is something that we're gonna be, you know, juggling over the next few months, I'm sure. It'd be interesting to see what a zoning enforcement officer takes for interpretation. Not only that, what, any further clarification that may be coming through the CMRs on this, but--
Right, I think we should probably request a meeting with either the, the building inspector or, or the town council on, just to see where we, I don't understand if we have a bylaw for already a, an in-law unit, which, that's the, the intention of the ADU was to provide that. We already have this in our bylaw. Do we have to abide?
Isn't that required, that's required to be attached to the house? The ADU is not required--
That's right, that's the, that's the distinction.
It's either way.
Yeah, well--
No, it's, it's to provide an accessory--
It is, but it has to be attached. Under our bylaw, it has to be attached.
Under our bylaw, doesn't it have--
With a mandate from the governor, it doesn't have to be, I know. I think it makes a lot of sense. I think we should probably sit with our zoning enforcement officer first, get a sense as to what his interpretation is, so that we know where he's at. He may not feel comfortable, or he may not even be certain as to where he's at. Or may, maybe he's steadfast, that's his interpretation. We'll know, and then we'll decide at, from there, if that we feel comfortable with that interpretation, as to whether or not then we need to consult with town council.
Right.
I'm surprised, to be quite frankly, that there haven't been any lawsuits from some of these other towns, some of these communities that have, you know, very prominent people who are very, you know, protective and restrictive of, you know, certain types of development. You know, towns like Weston and, and Newton, but Wellsley. I haven't, I haven't seen anything come about where there's been any, any type of a--
I would think, Mike, that they need to have somebody actually be approved for it, and then you'll see the lawsuit.
Possibly, maybe. But there may be a situation where you'd want to prohibit the mandate from coming down from the beginning, and basically saying that the governor doesn't have the authority, and challenging some of the governor's authority to circumvent town zoning when it's part of a master plan, and it's taken into consideration health and safety risks and whatever else. I don't know, I'm not a--
We might have to revise our zoning bylaws at the next town in here--
Oh, I'm sure we will. If this, if this mandate becomes something much more permanent, yeah, I sense that that will happen.
Because, I mean, I don't know, are you gonna allow eight hundred square feet attached and then allow another--
Nine hundred on, in the, in the farm on the side of the house?
Yeah. Oh, that's like a three-family house.
It'll be interesting to see. And that's certainly not what we've wanted to promote in, in, in our towns, especially in Single Residence A and Single Residence B districts.
Yeah, for sure.
That certainly goes, it contradicts the master plan of this town.
I was just wondering, Mr. Chair, because I've seen in certain subdivisions where, uh, there's restrictions in the D against something like that. I just wondered what, what would happen if somebody came in, came in, subbed about a piece of property, restricted it, outlawing this? But can they do that? Like, you know, you can, you can have a subdivision now that says you can't park boats or mobile homes on the property, and you can't put accessory buildings on it.
Or have more than a three-bedroom house. Or have more than a three-bedroom house.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I--
What happens then?
I would think that those are still enforceable, because those are, those are private, so to speak, they're private restrictive covenants, and there's, you know, there's, there's rights on fellow owners within that unit, within that subdivision, that to enforce that, but that's interesting. I don't know exactly how that would work out. All right, so I just figured we talked a little bit about that. Certainly, I'm sure we're gonna be reading up on that individually, and then if we want to discuss it again at the next meeting, we can do so. So is there any other new business anyone would like to discuss? If there isn't, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Good evening, everyone.